Wait to get some more people in the chat. Ooh, my eyes are burning. Oh, I smells onions. Hello, how are y'all? It's big news. Hello? Hello? How's everybody? Slam that thumbs up button for me. Beautiful evening here. I'm here in Otter Creek. Here. At the town hall. There's no meeting, but there is a, um, a note on the door. Some of y'all may know already. It's probably out there on, online already. Get some more people in the chat. We'll go up there and read the, the letter. See what's going on. Um, it is past seven, so the meeting would already been started. A few people showed up. I got some filming. Uh, video film of that, um, and I'll put that out there in a video tomorrow or the next day. Uh, the town hall, town hall meeting is canceled. And we are gonna see what's going on. There's a letter up there on the door, a note saying why. And someone else showed up here too, that I recognized. That's really the big news. We got a hundred people in the chat and we'll go up here and read this, um, what's going on over here? We got something going on here. We got something going on here. And we got some big news. Somebody's looking for somebody. Um, actually the same person was looking for me a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, a year ago. Same person to look for some other people, lots of people throughout his career, be honest with you. Seventy-eight people in the chat. Hit that thumbs up, please. The world famous, um, water hydrants here. Fire hydrants. They are not locked anymore. The new council had them locked for a little bit because they were stealing water up there, but, uh, they've took them back off. There's a note on the door. Something to do with the town hall meeting. Trying to get a hundred people in the chat. We'll go up there and read it. Um, and there's something going on over here on that sign. I have nothing to do with. I cannot touch it. It's on private property. Um, that's between him and the people, which I'll let y'all see that. And somebody was here to serve someone. And I'll let you know, and I'll not hear soon. And it's, he said something to me. I didn't understood what he said. I didn't say nothing back and he didn't look at me and didn't say another word. Otherwise, he was here at all. He didn't say or look at me. So, I didn't say nothing to him. Thank you, Mike Johnson. We love you, Thomas. You're a good man. Thank you, brother. We got a hundred people in the chat. Happy birthday, Belinda. Hundred and one people. We're gonna go up here and see what's on here, um. For some of y'all have seen that van was pulling out of the yard. Yes, he's my friend. I've known him for a very long time. He's not getting along with some of the town people and it's politics. That's between him and them. I'm not involved with that. Y'all know the relationship I have with the people at the town and the people I've known for 20 years. I love them, both equal. Simple as that. If nobody, if y'all don't like it, so what? Um, and that's not for my loyal fans and supporters. That's just, you know, that's how it's gonna be. Anyways, let's check this out. Now y'all dying to read it. We're gonna get up here and here it is. This is some of the big news. There you go. Town hall meeting. For March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five has been canceled. Due to council members unavailable to attend. We will reschedule the meet, meeting, March meeting. The time and date will follow. So, and I'll see you then. No town hall meeting tonight due to council members couldn't attend, so. We don't know why they couldn't attend. Um, we don't have that information. But they were a server here, pulled up right there. And was looking to serve some papers to someone that was not here. And um, so that's what that was about. The server was here looking to serve the mayor. So, that's what I was told. Um, and that's what he said. He was looking for Zim. So, yeah, he was gonna get served some papers from the same guy that served me. Um, and he said he had been by his himself all day or something. He wasn't directly talking to me, but I overheard it. He wasn't trying to be quiet about it. So, that's that news. We got the news here, no town hall meeting. We got the big news, um, I guess Zim is getting served or something. I have no clue. It's not my business. It's probably out there already. But, and I don't know what for. Um, anyways, over here. This has nothing to do with me. The sign. Corrupt liar, Belinda Town Clerk. Has nothing to do with me. That has to do with this man and the town clerk. That's his property. Someone else went over there and tore that sign down. They was this close to getting arrested. That is private property. That is, um, private property as their belongings and their property that it's on. I cannot touch that sign. All I can do is ask them to tear it down. And that's up to him. So, thank you, Funny Sonny. Hi, Thomas. Keep doing what you're doing. And I've known this man fifteen years. So, just for some politics stuff, I'm not gonna dislike him and, um, you know, I've known him as Splenda twenty years, so. Anyways. Do that and see, um, what I can post out and what I can't, you know, just with any video, same thing you do with any video. And I'll put it out there. Um, if it's even worth posting. There's a lot of films, uh, footage I filmed that ain't even no good really, that I don't even post. And that's just with being a YouTuber and filming things, so. Uh, but yeah. I'm gonna get to reading. Yeah, hey. All they can do is work it out. It's politics crap. And, uh, has nothing to do with me. He, um, he wanted me to show you, so I just showed you and y'all could put y'all's opinions out there. He knows he's gonna get hate for it. But he don't care. He's, he's into the politics and he's, um, don't agree on things they're doing, so. But yeah. Mr. Don showed up. Russell showed up. Zim must have known he was getting served. I have no clue. That is my honest, um, I'm being honest with y'all. I, I have no clue if he knew or not. But his worker was here. Um, on the golf cart and I guess the server's been by his house several times, seen him and, and the worker said he hasn't seen Zim all day, so. That's just what I have been told. Zim may not even know he's being served, so I don't know. None of us know. These are all theories and people's opinions, so. Thanks for sharing. You're welcome. Anybody have any questions? I'm willing to answer some questions if anybody has any questions or something they wanna know. If I'm willing, if I, uh, can answer it, I'll answer it. If I can't, I'll let you know. I hate to keep y'all just sitting here looking at the woods and the road. I am wearing my gator hat. And Storage Legend shirt. Yay! Trying to see here. Get a couple pictures. I can screenshot and get them, uh, developed. What do y'all think of the yard, man? I was, me and Marty was getting her done yesterday. The sand gnats are terrible out here. Tearing me up. Man. Live next town hall sign on property of Belinda. How's your studio coming along, Thomas? I haven't worked on it, to be honest with you. Bought some stuff for it, never did anything with it yet. Been working on the yard. My dad came home. Had to deal with all that. Now it's a big, big ordeal there. So, um, had truck issues. Just all that type of stuff, life, you know, conquer trucks. See, read some of these comments. Couldn't the vice mayor conduct the meeting? Um, yes, I think that's what a vice mayor's for. Hi, Thomas. I know why they wanna serve them. Oh, I have no clue. Heck, yes. Storage Legend shirt. That's right. I was late. Who's sign got tore down? Um, this sign over here got tore down and it's this guy's here. And the people that tore it down was pretty close to going to jail for this destruction of private property, trespassing. Um, yeah. You will go to jail for that. Just for tearing that down. It is not on the town's property. Trying to go back and read some of these comments. Your yard is looking nice. Thank you. Um, my dad is doing good. I'm, I guess, um, you know, he's with his brothers and, uh, his mom, so. He's doing his thing. He's, you know, let him, let him do his thing. Been locked up for a long time and I love him and he knows that. We'll hang out again. For sure, sometime. Hey. Hey, hey, waving a hand from uh, JBL. Sound guide. Hello? George, he's doing pretty good for the most part. You know, considering doing twenty years in prison. Peds never said Zim was being served to go to jail. Never said that. I got served. I've been served by certain someone. A year or so, two years, a year ago or something. Same server served me. Well, if you're getting served by this person, it's probably, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't wanna be served by him because you could be, end up getting sued, I think. I guess he does more other types of servers than that. I'm not sure what he, what he all serve, so I don't know if it's good or bad. I really don't know. Um, I never said he was dodging either. I, uh, I know you didn't, I know you're saying I didn't say that or whatever. Anyways, bunch of drama. I don't know if he's dodging. It just says, um, for council members, uh, couldn't show up. He's the mayor, so I, it would probably say if it was the mayor, the mayor couldn't show up. I don't know. Um, it's all public record. It will be public record sooner than later. He is a mayor. He is a pu- How's your mower running? My mower's running awesome. I just, uh, mowed Mr. Richard's yard today. Um, the maintenance man of Otter Creek. I mowed his yard and, uh, got it done. Got it looking good. First, uh, mow of, of fall or not fall, uh, spring. What time is it here? It's seven forty-six here. Daylight, usually, uh, it's dark. Time just sa- changed, I think, Sunday last weekend. Kiki, kitty, kitty, kitty. Uh, Mike Johnson, uh, it's at the machine shop. Um, it's getting not to put a bigger stroke crank in it for a three eighty-three or bigger. And it's getting bored thirty over. Brass freeze plugs, um, what else? Uh, new cam bearings. Um, all new plugs all throughout the engine, um, where plugs go, you know, in the back where the freeze, around the freeze plugs and things like that. Um, I don't think it's getting decked. I'm not sure. Uh, so. Yeah. It's, it's gonna be a fun little project. It's gonna be a hot rod engine for sure. Thank you so much. Thanks for covering this, Thomas. Yes, no problem. I try to be neutral when it comes to this stuff. Like I've said before, I'm neutral. Um, I think it might be Sniper fuel injected. It's kinda like a carburetor. Or, you know, old school carbureted, one or the other, but more than likely it's gonna be a Sniper, um, it's just like a carburetor, but it's injected. Been a lot of work done at this piece of property here. Yeah, the time changes a lot more daylight and the evening times. Rider Ron, thanks for the news, Thomas. No problem, Kim. Hit that thumbs up button for me, please. Got a hundred and seventy-three people in the chat. Thank you, Peds. Hello, how many car magazines are in your living room? Um, I did have one Summit magazine. I get Summit racing, uh, magazines. Uh, buy parts out of, sometimes I get eggs. Um, and I just threw it away the other day because it was old. A little house here. Used to be bigger. The whole back of it got tore off. Pretty sure he's tearing the whole thing down. Well, it's pretty quiet here in Otter Creek. I'm just walking up down the road here. About to make it my way home. Hello? For some of y'all that missed it. Ten dollars for, from my mom. Thank you. For the people that missed it, there's no town hall meeting, obviously. Um, the news is supposedly somebody was gonna get served here, the mayor. Um, dude showed up. And some people were talking to him and I overheard it. Um, the sign is up. And no town hall meeting tonight. And I'm gonna show y'all the, um, sign one more time and I'm gonna hop off of here and get home. A hundred and seventy-seven people in the chat. Let's get that thumbs up. Hit that thumbs up for me, please. There you go. Due to not enough, uh, council members couldn't attend. I ain't worried about no trolls. It just helps the out of the rhythm. I'm past that stage in my YouTube career. I'll let y'all know. Y'all can roast them. Let them know how you feel. Um, I'm not really worried about the trolls. When I first started my YouTube channel, comments bothered me. I don't care anymore. I really don't. I watched a lot of YouTube channels and podcasts. And homeless, every big YouTuber went through this. They get down and the YouTube comments bother them and they say they get past that. And it don't bother them. So, I'm past it. You would ask me a year ago, yeah, they bothered me. Lot stressful, real stressful. I do not care anymore. Yes, they found the two missing girls this morning. Fourteen miles from where they put in. Overnight freezing. Hi, Julia. Yep. Alright, y'all. I'm gonna wrap it up. Almost to a hundred thumbs up. Thomas, good job, bud. You rock. Thank you, Shannon. Sharon, Shannon. Who is running for the council in the next election? Um, quite a few people. I'm not sure exactly. I'll have to look on the, the paper. It might be up here. Oh, it is. Let me see here. Let me see if I can turn the light on. Um, right here. Here is the ballot. Um, pause it and read it and I'm gonna go down it slow. pause it and read it and I'm gonna go down it slow. Here's somebody. Right here is who running, I guess. Rex, Don, Lynette, Sim, Russell, Jeffrey, Carl, and Stuart. There y'all go. I got a couple mods, but they're not in here. It's all good. I don't need no mods. Comments ain't gonna bother me. They did. I will tell you that, they did. But I, I, go ahead, say what you gotta say. I really don't care, straight up. They got a live too and, and I don't let none of my mods know when I start. I didn't tell anybody I was going to go live today. Um, didn't mention it. Some people ask. I, I told one person I might go live. Hello, Thomas from Oregon. Thank you. Hit that thumbs up. Um, and I think I only got three or four mods. And all this helps the algorithm. I could care less. They can talk crap. The haters can. I don't care. Alright, y'all. Dang, 111 thumbs up. I'm not, I'm not worried about the trolls. Let them, it helps my algorithm. It really don't bother me. I, I can care less. I've been picked on and called names my whole life. I do not care. They have freedom of the right to speak what they want. I don't care. You better go to your mom's basement, boy. Get back in that basement. Okay, then see you later. Take care. You do the same. Thought I heard some of my whistle. That's too funny. This is too funny. I love it. Keep them comments coming. You a messed up drunk. For one, I don't drink and I don't do meth. I got my teeth, buddy. What's up? What's up, what's up, what's up? Holding the fort down? You're a hater. I did. I said, what's up? I said, you holding the fort down? There's a, there's a troll in the chat. My mods are not in here that control the trolls. They have other YouTube channels and things they gotta take care of. And I didn't notice, notice by anybody, so I don't, you know. I do have mods. They're just not in here right now. And a good comment or a bad comment helps my algorithm anyway, so. Um, and I do probably need to make some more, um, moderators, so. Liar, liar, pants on fire. Yeah, yeah, okay. Mike, you're this at Newbury. Have foot of snow in my yard, yeah? Well, that's what you get when you live in Florida, so. I don't know if I could live in the snow. I hate the cold. Eh. Something's going on over there. Mike Dan will be home late. She's busy. More than runs role. Hello, Thomas. Good point. Yeah, I got my teeth. And I get, some people don't lose their teeth because they are doing drugs. It's because they have, um, problems. It's not always because of drugs, so. But, uh, yeah. Oh, just left at the trolls, Thomas. I am, hey, hey, I really am, like, a year ago, they bothered me, you know, you gotta get past that, that phase in your YouTube career. You gotta get past that because they will. But they're behind a keyboard. They're, like, I'll never see these people, never meet them, more than likely. And then when they do come around, they don't say they're the ones saying this. You know, so. But anyways. Everybody got their opinion. Hey, I'll block whoever I want. This is my channel, you remember? Let me, let me turn, let me, let me put it, listen. Whose channel is this? This is mine, mine. I'll block whoever I want. Plain and simple. You don't like it, ta ta. Ta ta! And if this is a fin you, ta ta. Don't care. I really don't. I'll sell whatever I want. Money talks bullshit walks. Fuck it. I'm, I'm, it is what it is. Excuse my language. Getting fired up in the chat now. Hey, listen. I am human. I'm not perfect. And you know, oh lordy. I could make you leave right now. Mike, if I wanted to. I could just block you. But go ahead, I, I don't care. I won't block you. You ain't bothering me. And I hope you ain't bothering my, my YouTube family and if they are, just don't pay them enough attention. Or give them a face full of it. Give it right back to them. You know? What size cam did I put in my motor? And my 88 is a 479 over 479. It's a pretty big cam. My last engine, I had a 480 lift cam in that. Um, and it was a Illuminati Voodoo cam kit from JEGGS. Uh, Summit crank, flat top Summit pistons. Uh, 450 plus horsepower, uh, rated, uh, rods. Um, aluminum heads, shorty headers. Uh, air gap intake, salt ri- racing, uh, intake. Thank you, Thomas. We got your back. Thank you. I hear DJ Radis has pulled over. They've been pulling a lot of people over up there in, at Town Otter Creek. A lot of people. State trippers. We just now got hit with a hay bomb. The sky is red. I'm so fortunate to have a well-built home. It's old, but doesn't rattle. Man. I didn't threaten nobody. They, it was people here. I was around people the whole time. That's not gonna fly. He's full of it. I didn't say two words to him. I told the dude on the golf cart, there's no town meeting. He didn't even go read a, uh, read the sign, so he didn't know. I didn't say two words, so he said to me, he said something, you wanna have a civil conversation when he pulled in? I don't know, something happened. I didn't say a word to him. They were people here, so nothing happened. He didn't say nothing. He sat in his vehicle. He got, he was parked right here. Got out, sat there for a while, opened his door. Didn't say nothing, didn't say nothing. Everybody cut it clear. It was just me and the guy on the golf cart over there. After other people left, he walked up with his live going. Looked at the sign. Walked back, sat in his car for five minutes or something and left. I did a little bit of filming, but I wasn't trying to bother the dude. He weren't bothering me, so I wasn't gonna bother him and I wasn't gonna be the aggressor. That's how you get in trouble. Um, so. Other than that, that's how that went down. True, true story. Is it a solid lift? Um, flat tappet, it's a flat tappet cam. It's not a roller, so yeah. Uh, um, it's a flat tappet. Old school. The one I'm building now that's in the machine shop is gonna be a roller. Roller cam, roller lifters. Uh, my motor, my flat tappet motor does have roller rockers on the heads, but yeah. There's some big 540s and 600 lift cam. Yeah, there's a big boy crap out there. For sure. I might be dumb on a lot of things, but I do, I know my engines and, and small block Chevys and stuff. Chevy's. I love mechanic. Explain to us what a cam is, if you know. I mean, I don't know that, I, I mean, I know what a cam is in my own way, but there's so many probably different ways to explain it. And I know you're not asking me, you're asking Mike, but um, a cam is basically in the center of the engine in a lot of engines. And it's a main important part of the engine. It's pretty much what makes your valve train move. Your timing chain took to the crank, to the cam, the cam spins, which moves your lifters up and down, which moves your pushrods up and down. Um, and moves your valve train and your heads. Ice, ice, baby. Yeah, that's a good song. Ice, ice, baby. Yeah, that's a good song. Try a 461, 461 full roller. I bet you that's a bad setup there. I don't wanna go full roller. I wanna go hydraulic roller. Full roller, you gotta adjust, uh, your valve lash almost every time you drive it. So. I know y'all can't see nothing. I can't believe there's this many people on here still and there's, you're just looking at the street, talking with y'all. Golf cart coming. That was Zim right there. And his worker. Huh? That was Zim. I don't know. Where, did he turn down there? I'm live, so.
He went bye-bye gone.
Oh. Sorry. Yeah, you're good. I'm live. They, they'll forgive you. I'm thinking to get off here and, uh. Yeah, that was, uh, Zim. Anyways. What time is it? Eight twenty. Uh. I'm not allowed to drive. Hope they figure what's going on with my eyes before June. I hope they do too. I'll be praying for you. Yeah, it is fucking dang blurry. Driving me nuts. Yeah, I know. I got mods. I'm gonna, I just, uh, I don't, I really don't. Can careless. If they come on, if they do, they do. They're busy. They got lives too and they got channels, people got their own channels and. Um, and like I said earlier, I did not notify any of them, so. I. The comments help valve the rhythm. It pushes it out there. It's, it's all good. Y'all can get them. Y'all can take care of them. Give them a comment and tell them how you feel. OCS Thomas is hometown and he can walk around if he wants to. Your comment didn't even. Need to be made. It was just so stupid. Yes, this is my hometown. I don't care what any of them say. They don't, they don't know. I, I. They're full of it. Uh, it's due to people couldn't attend councilman. Got somebody riding around. Yeah, I do have my own house. I'm blessed. Uh. So I'm blessed to have my house. I'm just a bot. You're being a creeper? Oh, no. My creeper is under the carport, you know? My, my creeper, I lay on and I, you know, I roll up under the car and work on the car. That's what I consider a creeper, you know? Yeah. He must be the other type of creeper. Cancel was meeting deal to councilman, couldn't show up, council members. Thank you. You are welcome. Geez. No one is allowed to use my footage without asking me. I don't use anybody else's footage. At all. It ain't worth to lose your channel. I'm not a, a news channel. I just video what I want. Um, and the people that has used my footage have asked me. And sometimes YouTube notifies me. And my copyright strike, uh, thing in my, uh, studio. And I'll let you know that people that are using your content. They'll email you. They'll put a notification in. They will let you know if they, um, catch it. And then you gotta go through the process to do it, which I've done it. Couple of people. Um. Some of them. Man ought to deserved it. I didn't know who they were. Never, didn't know their channels, so. I didn't even watch the video. YouTube said they used my footage and I just said. Take my footage down. And, um. And that's what happened. If any, uh, anything in this video offended anybody. Go ahead and unsubscribe and move on. And my. Subscribers, alright? I'm not changing for anybody. I'm not taking nobody's shit. So if anything in this video I said. Bothered you. Move on. Cause I don't care. You know how I look at it? The 700,000 subscribers other YouTuber got, other YouTubers got? Come on, you know what I'm talking about? That's 700,000 people in the world is not the only people in the world. Come on, do I need to turn this around for y'all? Oh, yeah. I don't know. Won't let me use flashlight this way. But anyways. There's billions of people in the world. He's not the only one. His, his subscribers are not the only one in the world. There's plenty of other people that can subscribe to my channel. Than his 700 and something thousand. Okay? That's all I gotta say about that. Okay, got my rant over. Going to step out on the dock and enjoy the sunshine for a little bit, little while. Hey. I don't care what that man says. He ain't got. He, he gets acorns for you know what, what, you know? He has acorns for those, for those things. And he ain't got one, uh, one big enough to, 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 yeah. Okay, we'll just drop it right there. You get my point. Uh. He's all this right here. Quack, 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 quack. Quack. Mm, quack, 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 quack. That's all that man is, a quacker. Talk smack. Yeah, the bugs are bad. Those cams are terrible. They're tearing me up. Yeah, a lot of trolls. How many arts coming? I don't know. No, I mean, yeah, I open the door for questions. Um, answer the questions. What, what questions you have? I don't know. I, I, I got a cease and desist letter a year and a half, two years ago or something, a year ago. That's all I got. When I, when I have an officer come to my house and say you're being served to go to court. Then I'll know. Other, until then, I haven't got no damn papers, okay? None. I ain't worried about it. I don't have anything in my name. Let him waste his money. I don't care. I haven't did anything wrong. It's okay. We can just look up his server. That's all you gotta do. There's a lot of information you can get through YouTube from people if you know how to operate a computer. Just cause you don't put your real name on there, does it, doesn't mean anything. Do your research. And you can find out who that is. I'm just a bot. I don't care who you are. Hey. That's his business if he's pulled over. Hope, uh, hope all goes well for him. How you doing, Chris? Fair use. Fair use. Yeah, okay. Tell that to YouTube. When you get a copyright strike for using somebody's stuff. Okay, just letting you know. If I wanted to, I could block the dude, but I don't, I don't, he helping my algorithm. I don't care. Let him comment. I didn't, I don't go live that much, so. My mom says she loves your comment, comma, channel. Thanks. Thank you. People get butthurt on these. You know, I understand. You can get down and out with some of the comments, but. It's, uh. Alright, what kinda question you got then? What you wanna know? I'm going through the comments right now. Ain't seeing no questions. Call me whatever. I don't know. I'm way behind maybe. I don't know. I'm right here about a town hall meeting. Been here for two hours, three hours, alright? I'm not running from nobody. And your old lady's at my house, so. Ha ha. I'm not backing down. Anymore. I'm not even worried about focusing. I'm just reading the comments. I give Thomas a chance here. He refused to answer me. I'm looking for your question, buddy. Yeah, I, I'm not worried about mods. I got mods. They're not in here. They're doing their own thing, which is all good. All these comments helped out the rhythm and, you know? I don't think he was calling me a mole. Hey, you know, this, this whole thing can end with one click of the button, send alive and it's like nothing, you know, it's over. But I'm enjoying this. Trying to find some questions to answer. I don't see none. Thank you for the $20 super chat, thank you very much. Tony. Whitney. I'm looking, I'm going through the comments. I'm going through these comments right here, and don't see not one question, dude. I'm just a bot. I, I don't, honestly dude, I am. I don't know if you're a girl, what, I don't know what you are, but I'm just telling you, I don't. See any questions here. Thomas, you're a better man, don't listen and care about the haters. Thomas, tell us about the missing kids, where are they on the river? They were in Cedar Key. Um, which is about 24 miles from my house, 20 miles. They were 16 years old, they floated off 14 miles. Out there and stayed overnight, freezing, they were found safe. It was a pretty crazy sad story there for a minute. They are home safe with their family. Kim, I'm not sure, um, it's a work in progress. Would I ever make peace with that dude? Um, there is peace on my end, I don't care what he does. I don't, I can care less what, what he does, I really don't. I'm not looking to do the man no harm. Don't care what he does, really don't. So there's, there's no peace to be made, like, there's nothing like, he don't like me, I don't like him, simple as that. Bygones be bygones, he goes his way, I go my way, but. A little cold and hungry, but they're alright. Taylor, yeah, you're right, never seen any questions, I have, still have yet to see any questions. Question, who do you think the mole is? I, I, I don't know, don't care. How's the weather down here? The weather's beautiful, I'm out here with short sleeve. Um, chatting with y'all. It's probably seventies, sixties, or, uh, sixty-nine, seventies. What's your cash, what's your question, Patrick W? I got the screenshot, what screenshot do you got? Leave her out of it. Troy is, uh, she's good people. She has nothing to do with my channel, nothing I have going on, so. Whose dog is barking? The person that it belongs to. It was hot in UK today, and, yeah, it wasn't too hot here today. No, I did not get the fire truck going. Go count them yourself, Patrick. Go look back on my videos. I counted the cameras that I could see, that I could physically say that is a camera. Now, I don't know if they're working. And I was on a public road when I did it, so. And that place is there for people to go look at. So, I don't know why people get mad when I go film it. People do it all the time. I don't know who that lady was, I have no clue about that. Uh. Think I finally caught up to the comments. And didn't see too many questions. Alright, y'all. Y'all enjoy your night, hope y'all sleep good. Don't slobber tonight on your pillow, so. I'm gonna get off of here. Goodnight, y'all. Peace. Hit that thumbs up button. We need more peace in the world. Peace and love. See y'all.